Good evening, everybody. We're going to open this meeting with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting called just for the information and the contracts maybe that's a sewer line that might be constructed up in the Reservoir Hill area. This is Darryl Kramer. He has most of the information on it. If you please let him do his presentation and hold your comments or questions until that's complete, and then we'll do our best to answer all those. All right, Darryl, go ahead.
Is this speaker on?
I don't think so.
Is that in?
Yeah.
As you know, I'm Darryl Kramer, infamous or famous, whatever you want to call me. I'd like to start with a little history. The Reservoir Hill area has been in the residential zone according to the zoning code. In this area, has been reserved for residents. Been reserved by the zoning board for residents. The area has water and fiber, and hopefully, we have some, we need some more infrastructure up there. Many septic systems up there are at or nearing the end of their life expectancy. Some are showing signs of failing. With inadequate space for new septic systems on some lots, this can create a major problem for the current homeowner. Future development is inevitable, as new homes are constantly being built in the area. The added septic systems increase load on the soils. This can increase health risk. A grant was awarded in the amount of $4.4 million. This is enough to service 102 homes and install the main lines with a capacity for four times that amount. As for the process, the grant specifies that it's already bought, which means it's built, operated, transferred. The contractor will build it, operate it, and transfer it to the Franklin County. We received six proposals for qualifications. We did a scoring process, which resulted in three firms closely scored together. This involved each of us, there were four of us on this part, studying 271 papers of qualifications and evaluating each firm. The scoring involved questions that were brought forward in the original RFPQ. The RFPQ was advertised as acquired by law. Next, we did interviews with each of the three firms. This involved questions from the RFPQ, as well as some contacts asking how they might handle the scoping process, design process, and construction, as well as scoping costs. Also, equipment and available manpower were evaluated. And I'd like to add here that each of the interviewees, interviewers, were allowed to ask whatever questions they wanted to of each of the companies. A second set of interviews with a second team, completely separate from the first team, evaluated these three firms in an interview also. Discussions with both teams resulted in the scoring and recommendation of Brackley and MS Consultants as contractors. After discussions with Brackley and MS engineers about a gravity system, a step system, a grinder pump system, it was decided that a grinder pump system best served the needs. And I'm ready for questions or comments.
Pardon, Darryl?
I'm ready for questions or comments.
Anybody got questions for Darryl on how he chose Brackley as the contractor to do the work? Nope? Do you have other, anybody have questions other than that for Darryl?
Do we know any type of, I just have some questions that were sent to me. Do we know what the grade or rating pump is for the plan that's being put in for these particular grinder pumps?
Do we know what was, what was the question?
Do we know what grade or rating is on the pumps that you are planning to use for the, this particular system?
The plan is to use E1 pumps, Environmental 1 pumps. They have to be designed and rated for where they're at in the system. Some houses may have a smaller pump than bigger pump, other than other ones, but they may all be the same too. Just depends on what the engineers decide needs to be done.
Do we have typical issues that come with this particular pump?
There, there will be a, a list of things that you do not want to flush down, or that you do want in your thing, very much the same as any septic system. There will be instructions on, on those sorts of things. What was you asking your question?
Do they have typical issues?
Typical issues, my report from Metamor out there is, is that the float systems, after about 10 to 15 years, is, is the major maintenance problem.
Typical stuff you don't want to put down there is what you don't even want to put down your septic system, you know, like plastics, hard stuff, anything that's not valid or graded, it should not go down there.
Do we have a large cost for repair? And what would the cost to replace it, and how often?
No. The guy at Metamor said, that was doing their repairs out there, said most of them are lasting between 10 and 15 years. I've heard rumors of less, I've heard rumors of more. A lot of it will depend on what Tom just said. What you put into it is what it'll be. It should last longer than out there, because out there at Metamor, they, they run two houses on each grinder pump. We're only going to run one house on each grinder pump. Each house will have its own separate grinder pump.
Do we have a cost for residents out there?
For the current residents and anyone who signs up during construction, the cost will be, we need a $200 hookup fee, but other than that, we will supply the pump, we will supply the electric, we will supply the labor to hook it up. We will dismantle your septic system, your septic tank. The only reason for a $200 hookup fee is that there needs to be some money in the collection system to start, to start paying for the disposal of the waste at Brookville and some startup Some people were recommending that we have a $1,500 hookup fee. That's, I didn't want that. I think, I think we can operate with a $200 hookup fee. And like I said, that money would be used to, for the original cost of getting this. In other words, what's going to happen is, is you're going to get hooked up, you're going to run for a month before you get a bill, you're going to get another month before you pay a bill, but the sewer system's going to have to pay the Brookbill seven days after that first month. And there are other costs, billing costs and things like that, that, that will need to be paid in the first six months, that there needs to be cash in the system for that the grant did not cover that. The grant covered everything else. I mean, they're putting in a new system for us, but the startup cost, $200, that's my recommendation.
There are any changes to the contract, no matter who makes the decisions or the contractors? Does it void the contract?
No. The legal people have told me that that does not, the only changes that can be made to the contract have to be made with both parties agreeing in writing. No change orders that are not accepted by the county or that are not accepted by the contractor. Both have to be accepted by both. It is a BOT. The reason for the BOT is we have so much money to spend, and the contractor's quite aware of that, that we can't go over budget.
And how long do residents have to hook on for the initial job?
It is estimated that we, we should be done with, the schedule calls for doing done with the easements, and the time to hook up would be before November, sometime in November, before then. The contractor wishes to start as soon as the second week of September with a, what do you call it, when you have everybody in, have everybody to a meeting, come in and see what's going on, and then they, they will start knocking on doors and try and get people signed up as soon as they can. We have to have the engineering done by December. We have to know how many and who is going to get hooked up before we can finish the
But the system won't be completed until '25?
It is our expectation that no construction will start until good weather next spring of '24 or '25, and at least six months of construction. But we do have to have engineering done. We will have to know who wants to hook up and who's not hooking up, and who will give us an easement and who won't give us an easement, so the engineers can engineer that. Everyone that wants to be hooked up, the engineer will have to come out and, and talk to them and decide where they're going to run the bike, where they're going to put the thing, whether there's enough electric in your electric box to run that, or whether they have to run, in some cases, they said they might have to run off the electric meter. That's not the way they want to do it. They want to run it out of a person's circuit board in the house, but there is a second option there. All these things have to be engineered before we turn one bit of dirt, and we need to know who wants to be hooked up this fall, and probably September, October is more of a timeframe when we're going to be doing this.
Because my big thing is that this is going to affect everybody up there, and we're now just getting to the point where you guys are approving them to put this in, and it has to be approved by Sep, the end of September, from what I'm being heard. You guys just put in a six-month moratorium for solar, so everyone can get on the same page, and all the walls and everything can get it right, and everyone can have the same information. Whereas, we're being shoved into this and have to make an actual decision where we're going to have to pay money out to whether we hook onto the system and when we hook onto this system. Because it's not if, it's when. Because if this goes in front of your house, you're going to have to hook on.
No, that's not true.
This, it stays.
It, it is, unless they have a state exception, correct? I mean, unless they can be exempted by the state, if the house is less than, or older than 20 years old, which is 90% of the houses up there, that it's going to pass, they would have to hook on.
Those, those calls that relate to mandatory hookup are related to two separate types of entities. Municipalities cover the specific Indiana section, which only include towns and cities, and then sewer districts. Those two entities can make you hook up as you come by. For county, I know our ordinance says that it says shall hook up. Talked to you guys, I think, and Darryl's recommendation is to change that, not from shall hook up, to may hook up. And arguably, the county, as its own body, does not have the ability to force a person to hook up, or give you a code. Now, if your septic system is failing, or the health department determines that it's a risk, then the health department will come in and make you hook up. But as a standard, this must happen. The, the two bodies that, that when they're installing something, that they are presumed they have the power to make that happen, but my rule of statute applies only to cities and towns and sewer districts, not the county. So that's the difference. So those exemptions that exist, distributive a little bit, those are for when a person is in a sewer district or a city or town. But the county, it's, the statute silent on our ability to actually force a person to ease.
But right now, if it does run by your house, you can get it hooked up for $200. I think it's what, I mean, five years from now, or even three years from now, if your system fails, then you're going to have to hook to it at, what, $10,000, $15,000.
If the county body says that your system is failing, or it's somewhere at risk, that they can make you hook up as it's coming by. The county health authority has that, has that power all the time. And like I said, I think Darryl's recommendation is to change the current ordinance, which arguably, even though it says shall, arguably, the Indiana code is, is silent on it. That was passed in 1975, so we could probably, we may have, I don't think there's outside to keep it as a may hook up, or shall hook up. So that's the, that's the situation as I understand.
I think average home out there, Darryl, is going to cost about $15,000 in material to do, right? For $200, you're going to get that $15,000 for free to hook up, if you do it when it goes through. If you wait and your system fails, then it's all on the homeowner. Is that correct?
So what's going to, when, what if the county changes their mind, comes by labor requires you to hook up? Because they can do that.
The county can.
If the county doesn't really trump the stake in municipalities, they can require the property owners living outside of city limits to connect if they're within 300 feet.
The definition of municipality, in that instance, is city?
I don't disagree with it from what state has, says that.
The defin, the definition of municipality, as it applies to that code.
But the plan is to create a district.
The, the issue about the cost in the future, right now, I have grant money that I can spend to get it to. After this project, after December, it will be impossible for me, I don't have the money to put it in for you. You'll have, the people up there will have to make a decision, each of them according to what they think is best for them. But the fact is, is I've got grant money right now. I can get them hooked up for free. I'm only asking for $200 so that the system is fundable after it gets off, so it's operatable. And after that point, then, unless some money floats down out of the sky, I can't afford to pay $15,000 to hook up the next person after that. So everyone is going to have to make a decision according to what is the best for them.
So how's come we get in the septic and go over there and check the people who live up there and find out who wants to hook to the system, who doesn't want to hook to the system? It looks like you got a cart before the horse, you got your grant money, but you don't have the people behind there in the septic and say they're going to hook up to the system. My thought sounds to me right now, nobody really has to hook to the system.
They don't have to, right now.
I mean, you're, you're throwing money out there and wasting money without even knowing that you can really actually hook to this, have anybody hook to the system.
Oh, there'll be people hooked to it.
You don't know that. You could say that, you, what, five people? Let's say five people, is that, is that affordable?
Then if only five people sign up, we'll kill the project, and it won't go nowhere. The money will go back to Ready.
But why do you put out there to look and see who wants to hook to the system?
Well, that's, how long has this been going on out there now? And you don't know who wants to hook and who don't?
Do you know who wants to hook and who don't?
No, I don't, but the people up there, I guarantee.
But how long has this been going on there? Do you have to ask those people if they want to hook to the system?
For months, for months.
But if you ask the people up there if they want to hook to the system?
No.
Okay. You got the cart before the horse.
That's your opinion. We only have so much time. We only have so much time for this money. This money goes back.
My opinion is, you've got to do it the right way. The right way is to go over and ask the people if they want to hook to the system before you go get grant money, so you know which direction you're going to go.
This grant money got thrown into.
The grant money, you had plenty of time, I've heard about this for two years, and you had, the grant money wasn't there when you started out with this ordeal.
It started out with the town of Brookville got the grant money, the $4.4 million.
Nothing to do with the sewer system.
Yeah, it started out that way, and then Brookville, and then they've gone their deal, and it come to the county.
Somebody else. It looks like it's somebody up here that's more hotter up than most counties' decision is not doing their job.
If you guys don't want it, we'll kill it right now and send the money back to Ready Corporation.
It's a bad thing. I mean, you're doing, you're doing the wrong way.
That's your opinion, doing the wrong way. Everybody has.
It is my opinion.
Go ahead, Derek.
Tom, last thing. One of my main issues with this project is that it goes with the grant money. This is a federal grant, and it's federal money. And I would assume from working in the auditor's office that this will be subject to a federal audit. This grant agreement was signed by you and Mr. Wilson, and states in section three that the grantee, Franklin County, Indiana, agrees that the local and private dollars will be expended by the grantee and the subrecipients for the project by this grant agreement and ratioed out grant dollars under the grant agreement and continued under the plan in Exhibit C. The plan, the plan is the grantee's grant application. When I asked for the grant application from the county, there was none. I was told that I had to go to the town to get it. So I looked at the town's application. It states that there are matching funds in the amount of $12 million from DNG and $24 million from SNW Homes, for a total of $36 million, and both in the commitment letters saying that DNG for 40 homes and SNW for 96 homes. And Exhibit C, which it says go to, is a letter from Chantel Anderson to the REED program manager, to Mary McCarthy, stating that she has been advising a project including associated match funds totaling $40 million, $464,107. These are not numbers that I'm making up. I'm pulling it up from an application and a grant agreement that you signed. So, Tom, being that you were the someone that signed this agreement, what assurances do you have that these matching funds will be procured at the end of this agreement?
None.
What assurances do you have that it won't fall on the taxpayers of this county to pay back this grant when it's not?
That there won't be any fallback on the taxpayers' account. We're doing this for the $4.4 million. If it can't be done for that, it ain't going to be done.
Okay, but I'm saying that there's matching funds in here.
There's no matching funds.
It says so in the grant agreement.
Bill Huff, Bill, does it say anything about a matching fund?
No, there, there, what we use the term speculatively as matching funds, it doesn't be a match. Yes.
So the, we use the term with our board of directors as speculative match, that shows where there had to be matching funds for all the projects. So in order for us to spend 14 or 15 million dollars worth of Ready revenue, we had to have approximately $75 million worth of matching funds, and that was done regionally. So they didn't have to be on an even basis of project by project. It could be accomplished anywhere. So someplace in Switzerland County could have came up with a $75 million match, and basically, they would have covered it for the region, or the entire region of Ready. So in our particular case, our match was approximately $350 million to $15 million, and we needed 75 to be able to do it. So if there was zero match, it's still qualified. But in this particular case, we did use the development of new homes, and that assessed or assumed the value of those homes was used as part of the speculative match. Some people have questioned whether those homes have to be built or not, and they don't. The question has been ran past Ernst &amp; Young, it's been, which handles the accounting on behalf of the State of Indiana, and they've been addressed to our attorney, John Kellerman, and I think he has been in communication with your attorney on multiple cases, and everything is good to go.
Yeah, it's just paperwork, you know, that's.
Correct.
Just to back up and clarify, Bill, Darryl, the, the hookups, and you getting the cart before the horse, because we're going to be having a public meetings, whether they be here or at a golf course venue up there, where homeowners, lot owners up there can come to the meetings to determine whether or not they're going to hook on to the system. That will occur within the next couple of months, and if that, is that what you said, Darryl? September?
Oh, we would like to do that in first part of September.
First part of September that occurs.
And then if.
If we don't get enough commitment from the public at those meetings, the project dies there.
No.
Notes?
Does the commitment have to be 102 homes?
No.
No.
So what's the number that has to be before it's, you know, when you're?
It's a may.
Yeah.
You.
There doesn't have to be, in my opinion, there's, there is no need to be any commitment. The, the, the deal is that we have three parcels of property that we should be.
But there has to be a number you're basing on, what you perceive as.
That's where the engineers are coming into play. That's why I, I, and I haven't seen the entire contract, but I'm assuming, as he mentioned in a BOT situation, as long as the contractor and/or the commissioners agree to a change, it could occur. And so in the event that nobody wants to hook up to it, we can go a whole lot farther. We can run the line far, because part of the cost in the evaluation of this was hooking up 100 houses. And if we use the number of 15,000 as a round number, I don't know, I think you mentioned that, Tom, or whatever, but if it was a cost of $15,000 and we hook 100 houses up for free, that's 1.5 million, we can run this line a whole lot farther if nobody hooks up. That would be my take on it. It would be that if we're putting it in the ground, it's just a question of, you can only afford to go so far, so.
But if you extend that, then you're going to run into problems with an antiquated sewer system, since the sewer plant hasn't been redone since 1991. It's 33 years old already, and running from what I've asked numerous people, 40% capacity. That will be at full capacity, and then we'll be replacing in town the sewer plant.
And I'm not, I didn't want, I didn't plan to stand up here, but those questions have been answered 15 times over the last year and a half. The, the town of Brookville's been engaged in meetings, there's been discussions already as to how the, the amount of flow, the amount of residual that they have, they're trying to make sure they can accommodate other locations that they currently have, and Tim Ripberger has informed us that everything's good to go. And I, you've been in those meetings, I have, and Darryl, but you've met with them, I believe, in regards to that, so, yes.
Sarah Duffy has asked that we use a mic if we're going to talk. Either go up there, or you can use this one. Let's finish my question, sir.
Where to turn it on?
I can turn it on. There we go. Is that better, Sarah? I'm a lover. They answered my question, what I asked you before, whether or not they can force us. They're saying no, but my question is, if they made it a sewer district, are they going to come back later and force us? And if they're saying, probably no, because everything I hear is a probably in my opinion and my take, are they going to give us individual homeowners some kind of letter stating that we never have to hook up?
I'm not going to speculate on sewer districts. The sewer district is a, is a way that they can make you hook up, and that's what those statements are calling. But I'm saying right now, that's what I'm telling you, because that's what your question was, if the county can do this.
Right.
So that's my answer to you. The county, as defined, says municipality, municipality operates sewer works. You are correct. Municipality is defined later as city or town, as it relates in that section. So, under home rule, when another entity is given the power to do something, the entity that is not mentioned does not have the power to do it. the entity that is not mentioned does not have the power to do it. So, the county has the sayings now, but does not have the power to make. Now, your question about can I apply, I'm just the attorney for the legal interpretation right now. Can I, uh, define as to whether or not the sewer district, things like that, if there's a sewer district, that is the means by which they can, and I suppose actually apply that.
Exactly, so that's what they want to know is, you say no now, but what about two years? Are we gonna have, I'm gonna be forced next year, you're after, you know? That's important to know. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, that's the thing.
It's very possible.
And it's, I mean, no offense, it's just like reading a grant. It's your opinion and my take on it. We don't have to do matching funds. It is a federal grant. It will be audited, and if we screw up on it, they could hurt the county. They could take us all down. So, that's something that needs to be known for sure. Not just on his opinion or take on that subject.
Like Bill said, it's, uh, the Ready Group is a region. Like nine counties, isn't it?
Six.
Six counties. And that region has to come up with the matching, which a lot of it's just paperwork. Like he said, we're gonna build 100 houses and what's the value of those?
Well, that's what he said, but again, you sign the papers, shouldn't you have known that before you signed the papers? Whether or not it's gonna have to be a matching grant?
No, it's, I knew it wasn't a matching grant, or I wouldn't have signed it, because we don't have that kind of money.
Uh-huh. So, how many homes is it gonna take if they're making feasible?
I think what's there now will make it feasible. It'll pay for the system that's going in.
And they all hook up, but I'm saying not be feasible, would have to hook up to make it feasible.
I would say probably three quarters at least. Depends on what the average bill would be. I mean, they're talking anywhere from 50 to 75, 80 bucks.
And so, like, or my son, while he's property, the line right now is not going by yet. So, you're in the middle of the project, and suddenly the office happens to hook up. Oh, let's go on down this way now. So, how's that gonna change things? If you're not giving people heads up, then boom, you're slapping out on the race, and you don't have a house built yet. And from my understanding, if they don't have a house built, they can hook up, obviously, you don't need it, but probably gonna have to learn sewer, and they can back to hook up?
I can't, I can't talk for the future. I don't know about extending line, if it'll ever happen or not.
If I'm making the point is, we gotta be prepared.
I understand. What we got is right now. We know what we got right now, and how far it can go. And we can hook up those people for nothing.
Hello, my name's Marco Oveby, and I'm a landowner on Reservoir Hill. And, uh, in 2008, I went to a town council meeting about getting sewers on Reservoir Hill. So, this has been 16 years in works. And, uh, but at that time, the town said, we'd love to run sewers, apparently, but we wanna hand ex. It, well, that, people clearly wanted to be hand ex, and I, I appreciate their opinion. It's, because I don't own, I just own property there. But I do own a 75 acre piece of ground that I am selling building lots on. And right now, I can sell an acre, uh, with approved septic. So, I've got 70 acres left to sell if I so desire. So, I have to be 70 more septic tanks. And if you get sewers, I could probably sell half acres, that'd be 140 houses, hookups. The, the people say, you don't have enough people to hook up. That's a hard place to build in. I've got people calling me every month wanting to buy a lot. Right now, I took my full sale sign down, because I'm waiting to see if I just sewer. You know, I can sell a lot and put a septic tank in, it's, it's, you know, no sweat off me, but, uh, I do have two different homeowners with sewers running through my tiles right now. And when I approached the one landowner, he goes, well, I said, I think your lease line's not working. He goes, well, I don't have a lease line. He goes, I've got a septic tank, and they tied right into your field tile. He goes, that's what they did it back in the 60s. So, you know, and that water runs into the little field golf course pond. So, I mean, there's problems up there, you know? I went up there to find again, we found all sewage. People act like, man, it's, everything's gravy up there. It's not, it's bad. These older homes, there's a lot of septic tanks, systems failing. And if I did live up there, and I could hook on for $200, I'd think about two seconds before I'd say yes. You know, it's pay me now or pay me later, and pay me now, it's pretty cheap. And we've got not only me, but there's, uh, another place there along the golf course wanting to develop. So, there's another 50, 60 homes maybe. There's a place just out of Brookville wanting to develop. I don't know, there's another 40, 50 homes. There's potentially 200 to 300 homes we build up there in the next 15, 20 years. And, uh.
And that will help the schools for one thing.
Well, originally, this grant was to bring in new construction, to get more kids in school. And then I think once I V M went up there and seen how bad it was, they went to Plan B, which was, we gotta take care of the family system that are there now. Which, I'm okay with that, that's fine with me. But, uh, what I, does concern me is the original map went down Space Road like, uh, she was saying to her son's property, which she bought off me. But now it's not going down Space Road. So, there are questions like, I, I like to see an updated map, because it seem like it changes every couple of months. But I realize it's changed because they wanna hook on to the existing homes up there. But, uh, as far as people saying you don't have the homes to, for this project, the homes are coming. I mean, it's just a matter of time. I don't know of any place in Franklin County that's booming more than that area. And if it got septic, it could bloom more. If you don't get septic, it's still gonna bloom. Or you don't get sewers, it still will bloom. Because, uh, but, you know, we're kinda, I'm kinda in a quandary what, what to do. All these other developers are too. I mean, like I said, 16 years ago, I went to a town council meeting about sewers. So, it's been 16 years trying to get something up there. And I went to Joe Meyer years ago, who was ahead of the health department, and talked to him about it, and he goes, well, he goes, it's not a question of if you get sewers, it's just a question of when. Well, the time is now, and I can't see passing up this money. And it's, a little bit of a noose, brings to the homeowner. I know you're gonna have a monthly bill if you hook on, but, uh, you know, it's just the way, you know, we're not in the 1960s anymore. I just think it's a good opportunity to help that area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Smart. Anybody else?
I'd just like to address the commissioner, I just like to.
My name is David Kirk, and I am a resident of the area where the proposed sewer project would be installed. I am here to ask the commissioners to return the Ready Grant Funds to the state, thus ending the project. It seems to me the project only benefits the wealthy minority and real estate developers in our county. Surely, the funds could be used in some other way that would benefit the entire public elsewhere. I was told by a Brookville elected official that the majority of residents on the hill want the sewer project to happen. I beg to differ. If this is true, why did the town of Brookville pass along the Ready Grant Funds to Franklin County? Again, I ask the commissioners to abandon the project and return the funds, which would actually serve the majority of citizens of Franklin County better than going ahead with the project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Anybody else? Okay, Darrell. We had a contract that our attorney has wrote, correct? Can you spell out the contract for us in, in just short term?
In short term, general, very rough, precious. It follows the statutory terms for a bill of transfer. Uh, it outlines the general terms negotiated between Darrell and Brackney in terms of, again, the high level, uh, proceeding and where generally the project's going to go, what they're supposed to be responsible for. It lays out a period that would begin, uh, once the contract is, uh, uh, approved, what will be called a winding period, to actually go out, I see saying, talk to folks, figure out specifically where, do a specific engineering, go up to a specific plan. Once that is confirmed, which is the top lines of the contract, then the contract, um, and the terms are set, and it says that we know the specific terms. Any common or any changes to that, must be done by change order. A change order does not impact the contract. It wouldn't have to be a usual change order, as Darrell said. Then, sort of the bill of transfer, Brackney is building, doing everything with the project until what is called the acquisition date back to the county. So, they are, they have the project, they do everything. They're building it to the extent that it's operational by that point. They operate it, and then it's transferred back on the acquisition price, which is the balance of the contract.
All right, wait, so you guys, you wanna do a contract with Brackney for this, so they can get started? I don't mean that it'll go even finished. This is just a contract for construction, yeah?
It's complicated, and our timeline, I believe, has been the proposal for the, the proposed, any day, around 26, uh, where we would actually acquire it back from them. It's, I believe, it's exhibit B, or B, the one project there.
It's, uh.
Exhibit B. What is it, it's the payment?
So, look at, it's wire, and I think it would be easier for us just to forget about it. But I think 20 years down the road, as a one of you, you probably have dug, uh, what you did not, because at some point, those systems will fail. That's all type of, this doesn't work forever. In some cases, you might be able to put one, that again, without, in other cases, if you don't have room for another system, that'd be your only alternative, or have, uh, the property you can build. So, I don't think anybody was put in that position.
Is there a signature?
But, but, I mean, I'm not the one who took the money. I, I, I say that, I just think for the good of everybody. If we, if we, 20 years down the road, if we pass this line, 20 years down the road, we have to put, put a system in, it's gonna cost a whole lot more. Because, you know, we're gonna be paying on lawn as well as hook up and all that. So, that's just my opinion.
That is true. However, thank the people that don't live on the hill. My mom just had to put a septic in two years ago, and she's unfortunate. But what makes us so special, up on the hill versus the other people in the area? Like Matamore, they did surveys, houses or something, they're having all kinds of issues. So, I mean, it just, to me, it's just kind of.
It's just population density and, like, community looking.
But still, I mean, what makes it right? You know, we get chewed out by taxpayers all the time, you know? I mean, at work, I've been chewed out about a time, but someone called me and saying, you know, they're out of a pay per hour, you know, going to build because the property taxes on us. And it's like, no, that didn't happen, but it doesn't matter. It just kind of seals us up out there, like, or something special.
No, that's like Matamore, the health department ordered that because.
They have the searches and vaccine out there.
There was so much E. coli in the water down there that she ordered a septic system be put in.
Yeah, but I mean, they could help, get help fixing it, because I know it's not right. Because I know how people out there, and there's, it doesn't work right. It's just, and then two is just another step in that direction where, sorry, but the government is now controlling the land even more. I mean, it's like you, we built where we did that we weren't in town, and we still have the country life. But now it's, you're moving to more where you're in town, and you're under more control. You're not being able to do what you want to with your property, because it's being controlled by the county and whatever. It'll be the septic, whatever they call it, because it's already been set. So, then everybody, or she made it out of line to the house, is what it is.
I think a lot of the problems they have down there is people putting stuff down into the grinder pump that shouldn't be there, and they plug it up, and then it's gotta be.
And don't they share grinder pumps?
They do share grinder pumps. A lot of them do.
Yeah, that's not good.
Now, these would be able to suck them in, but it's poor, not anymore.
Oh, I have one more question. I know it's on the map, the proposed map, it's going back to Brook Hill and those homes, which, or that's like town now, so why is it going back to them and not going back to where the other areas?
I don't think any of it's town. It's all county. The town, the town owns it back, the golf course is owned by the town. It's a town, so. Pretty common.
They have.
They own the business on that.
Yeah, I think this is the newest map to where it goes and where it stops and stuff, if anybody wants to look at it. Think it stops at Clover Road. And so far down Reservoir.
Actually, Tom, it goes 270 feet past Clover Road to the top of that mole, just past Clover Road there.
Oh, okay. And where's that at on, uh, Reservoir? How far down is that, past that last house?
It just goes past. It goes, goes past Clover, 270 feet approximately. There's a little mole there just past Clover Road. It should reach to the top of that. Um, that gives that piece of property there access if that ever develops in the future. The cost to put that 270 feet in right now is a lot less than it will be in the future.
It goes down Keeler Road to what, Darrell?
Goes down Keeler Road, past the bend, and up to the intersection of, uh, Space Road. We had contemplated trying to go down Space Road far in that, in that direction, but, uh, the engineers were concerned that there wouldn't be enough flow unless we went all the way back to Brookhaven. And we didn't have enough money to go all the way back down Brookhaven. But if we only went down Keeler, through all those empty lots and those fields, I think there's one, two houses there, and maybe another one coming here very soon. But, uh, we can't, we can't make enough flow to make that pipe work with just two houses there.
But with more houses, it may work, the flow?
Yeah, with more houses, because.
More construction, it may.
Yeah. And then, um, the size of the pipe there is, is big enough that it can be expanded all the way back to the end of Brookhaven Road, and it can handle all those lots there. But if I put the four inch line back to that with only one house that way back there, that's not gonna be enough flow to keep that line free. That's what the engineers told me. I'm not an engineer, that's just what they told me.
Okay, I'll call for a motion if there is one, or no.
We've had a lot of people, we've had a lot of time in this project already, uh, and there are questions. there are questions that need to be answered, the public meetings and as we move forward, but maybe it goes an extra long way. And I think that we've got an opportunity here with, uh, the funding that we, we have currently to address the problem and future problems. And, you know, I, I see very deep for us to move forward with this project right now, uh, while we have, while we have this one available. Do you want me to make a motion that we go ahead and accept, uh, approve the contract with Brackney Corporation to move forward with, uh, the ready grant project?
No, second motion. Trans motion. All of the paper. No, second, I'm sorry. Those are two. I think it just was. Just one.
Is that a signature? Okay.
So this one, it would just be somebody in town. I am a property owner up there as well, and my, I mean, current construction will operate about a house completion. I'll tell you honestly, as we were all good, so, I...
Not till it's completed.
I thought I would, and, uh, you know, it's a little bit, so, I bought my home for your dad. I bought a lot for your dad. I waited several years. It's this conversation, I lost, I think I bought that in ninety-nine, and this conversation was happening back then, in nineteen ninety-nine. We thought, there was talks of sewage and gas being run up there within a matter of a couple of years. I didn't build for three, I didn't build until two thousand and three because I was waiting to see what was going to happen with those things. I think there are people that are in the same situation right now, um, you know, and there are others that are in a situation where they've got to address a, a current problem. And that's why we, we follow the, uh, the, the rest of this.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'll make a motion to close a special meeting for the Reservoir Hill Sewer District. All fair.